Ladies and gentlemen, I call a meeting ordered. A real place to stand for a pledge of allegiance and college people listening. Just to keep continually remembering the victims in Las Vegas, you know, laughing ass mass. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our heavenly Father, we are humbled by your presence. Lord, we appreciate the opportunity you allowing us to meet here tonight. Lord, we ask that you'll watch over the ones that are sick or ill. Lord, you couldn't be here tonight, but we ask that you watch over the ones that may be here tonight that need your attention, which is all of us. Lord, we ask that you'll bless us, and we ask that you'll watch over this government body. Give them the wisdom and the courage to make the decisions that are not only in the best interest of this community, but also in your eyes. We ask this in your son's name, amen.
We have a question about my councilman, Councilman Fox. Councilman Murray wrote on top and said, "A first thing on agenda is special presentation request for private parking, Wanda Partica, Partica." And he can forward it. Yes, ma'am.
I apologize. I don't have much of a voice. Do you want me to explain what?
Yeah, just for the record, state your name and address.
Wanda Partica, 400 Main Street, Tasswell, Virginia. There's a parking area in front of my house, and I think I have the only private house on Main Street in the actual limits. And my understanding is the house was built in 1996 by Walter Smith. And I understood from Jerry Woods, the previous town manager, that he had come before the town council back around that period of time and gotten an ordinance that the parking space in front of the house actually belonged to the house. Now, I did not ask him at that time to pull a copy of that, so I don't know where it is. I might be happy to sit down and go through and try to find that. But at this point, there could be an issue because the brewery next door is going to require parking. And the fact that that is the only access to that house, there's no back entrance, I would like some way to have the parking space kind of protected as mine in front of the house. There is a garage and a gate that goes up to a garage. Unfortunately, the garage is not usable for a car, but it does exist, and a gate does exist. And at this moment, in front of that gate, the strip is yellow. So I believe that that kind of protects it, not makes it an illegal parking space, but protects it from being locked in if it was a usable drive. So I would like some way, a solution possibly to be found to protect that as a parking space in front of the house, not just for me, but for anybody who might have that house in time. Does that explain kind of what's going on?
There's no fire. It's in front of the coal building, I think.
Yeah.
It's the coal building.
It's below, it's across.
It's three feet from the Painted Peak Brewery.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Okay. So what she's asking for is two parking spots in front of her house, one of which would be in front of your gate, but she can't get into her gate because the pitch is so high that you can't get a car in there. Truck maybe, but not a car, bottom out. So she's looking for is two parking spots in front of her house that would be protected for.
For the house.
Yes. Just let Council know, it's been a couple of months. I stopped by and talked to Ms. Partica yesterday. A couple of months ago, I had a couple of elected officials mention the parking area to me, but I feel I'm getting what the can't. I don't know what the perception of that's going to be with the other businesses on Main Street, and that's the reason I didn't act on it. And we'll post it, you know, if you deem necessary to do so. I will say that even though it's a residential home, it's also zone B2, so it's actually business. So if you were to have any construction ever done in there, it wouldn't fall under an R construction criteria. It'd actually be a B2 criteria that it would. So it kind of complicates things a little bit for residential homes, but that's a good thing, by the way, that it is zone B2, in this situation anyway, because it kind of fits in out there. And she does, I think, run a business out of there, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, but needing that direction from Council, obviously for the record, what I'm looking for.
Do you have a discussion to ask questions for?
I'm curious what Brad would say.
Yeah, he's back there. There's nothing, I'm not sure, but there's nothing illegal about it. It's just a perception that other business owners on the street. That's the only reason I have.
Then is the council member admittance, PDA file type deal, and then I think nice that you can do a quick search.
I know that they are bound in a book.
Okay.
I don't know if I could sign them like digital, but they are in a book in the vault.
Now, I think Chris will. I spent about a day and a half through the 1996 council minutes book. I'm not saying it's not your matter, but I did.
It should be, should be the time when that piece of property was deeded to this government or whatever. It seemed like that house was tore down.
Yeah, there was a house.
And then we built back.
I was seeing business talk to me a few months ago. I was looking at.
And I say the house was built in 96. I mean, anytime from 96 to 2000, he could have come. I don't know that he did it exactly. I know he passed away in 2002, so it obviously was done before then. And I mean, the fact that it's a private residence, I don't know that anybody's ever questioned, you know, that it's a business, that aspect of it, because there is literally no other place to go.
Cancel's heard your request. If you want to talk to Brad, we can just hold off until Ms. Partica will stay, but I can come back tomorrow and give you an update if you'd like, or you can stay for the show. Brad gets back out, we can bring it back up if you'd like.
Were you serious in your offer? I mean, if we could get 96 to 2000 and we could get it, would you be willing to look through it?
Sure. Yeah, as long as I, and I imagine it can't be too difficult. Once I would understand the layout of how the meetings went.
It's not.
Yeah.
I auditioned in those 2007.
Yeah, well, and that's why it's like I have no idea, I mean, because I wasn't involved in it. It's just that Jerry Woods was so positive that it was done, so.
Well, we'll do that. I'll make a recommendation that the staff and also Ms. Partica, if you'd like, we'll review those events and try to find them, and maybe we can bring it back up again in November. And meanwhile, the chief, the acting chief is her, that's her DSH, and we can act accordingly.
We actually already, we've already visited that once. She did get a ticket, and I excuse it because a new decision was made.
So we'll just act accordingly until we can find it. Is that okay with Council?
Yeah, and it might be something in our ordinances too, not necessarily on Main Street, but parking spaces in front of a residence or, in this case, visitors people B2.
We'll take a look at it. I'll get back to you. So it might take, you know, this week, maybe next week, but I'll get back to you.
Yeah, and I think for the sake of the house, whoever's in that house, that it needs to be clarified at this point, especially with the brewery and the businesses coming, that it just is something that's carried forward with the house for everybody, so, okay?
Thank you very much. Get the bill, bud.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, next time we begin this acting chief, we'll see you in someplace. The reason we got all the places from here is Derek, I keep a garden floor over there. That's why. That's the only way we can hear a circle.
He keeps us on track. I'll make some bins in the family room. I want to introduce my staff, and I hope you like our new uniforms. We picked these out not long ago, and I think we've got a lot of compliments about the change, and I think it's very comfortable, very workable, and it's actually a little affordable. It's a little cheaper. It's not cheaper as far as quality, but it is as far as the cost of it. So we'll start with this side. Flo, will you introduce everybody to their form, please?
Can y'all stand up, please? If you all would like me, come up front before the council, please.
Who do you want to face, Flo?
So when they see you out there, know who you are. Okay.
Go ahead. I'm starting.
Mayor, Councilman, Town Manager, General Public, I would like to introduce to you the members of the Tasswell Police Department. Staying beside Mr. Brewster is our acting chief, Dave Mills. Starting from left to right, we receive our new sergeant, Stan Lampard. Mike Steele is a corporal, he's been with us for a while.
All right.
His last has been promoted to corporal also. Officer Layton is still resourcing corporal in our department. Officer Blake Robinson. Melissa Woodard, our code enforcement officer. Officer Summer Hess.
A little bit.
Officer Daniel Thomas. Officer Joe Stevenson, I have a big name for them, he's our keeper, right man? And our new assist, Officer McPhill, your true.
We're within one of these pool staff. We had one that chose to take employment in Bristol PD the other day, so we are one now. We don't feel like.
I want to explain recently.
Do what?
I want to explain why.
Oh, it was the family reasons and also the distance, right? Oh, they're calling to, they're going to the ratings and shoot nightclubs. I thought you meant the other guy.
Next time we begin this recreation department update.
I believe you have, I had you guys scan a kind of listing of pool concession and shelters from the past year and this year. Kind of just a brief overview, I can go into more detail, but in every department, whether it's pool, rental, concessions, shelter rentals, pretty drastically lower than last year. There are some variables because of that. There were less tournaments, softball tournaments, weather was a little iffy, there was a brief storm that passed that made the pool very cold for a good two weeks, and that did hurt a lot in terms of concession, obviously, because that's where the rules from. I do, and I mean, if you have any questions, you can ask me as soon as I finish. I do have some ideas that are going to help bring those up, and honestly, I see these and they're, you know, it's unfortunate, they're low, but I look at it as an opportunity to kind of show next year we go up. There's a lot of stuff we're going to be able to do with that pool that I mean, I have plans for days, and obviously I know with budget, and come December, you might not like me too much for how much I need for that park, but I just want to, I want to give the town something better. For example, the pool we have, it's pretty, it's pretty simple, not much to it. You got a diving board, you got a riggity slide off to the side, and you got a little kick. I would like to see a giant slide there, somewhere involved in that area, a giant slide. The one we have currently, it wobbles, there's at least 12 occasions where a child fell off that slide, and it's just because they're going quick, they're, you know, it's just kids being kids, but it's a safety issue. No one ever come up to me about it, but it's just stuff I have known of. As well as just more so, the kids zone, a lot of it is not used, and I mean, I look at it every day, it's not used, and it's a great sized kids zone, but all that area's kind of been wasted. I would like to move up into the kids zone and even maybe expand the pool, even if that means adding slides starting up a little higher, making kind of direct into the deep end, deeper ends, possibly putting two slides in. My reasoning for that is, for at least the six months that I've been here, the places that I've noticed are Randolph Park, they've got the really nice water facility. You go to Lake Witten, they got the boats, I guess the paddle boats. You go to, where else was it? The Ace Adventures, they got the inflatables in the lake. Hungry Mother Park, they got the beach on the lake, and they also have little boats. A lot of people don't title us to anything but a lake that you can walk around. And I would like for people to say, like, well, what are we going to do this weekend? Oh, let's go to Lincoln Shark because we have this and this. And I think something that would help with that would be kayaks. People have been, I go back there, I see people kayaking, one or two people, and they love it. They always tell me it's, you know, it's very peaceful, it's just sitting on the lake and going. Richland, I talked to Cherry Daniels, they have a kayaking club, and a lot of them don't even know that Lincoln Shark exists. And I think that's something that needs to be fixed. I mean, it's a beautiful park, the crew maintaining it does a great job. I just think there needs to be more to give the people so that when weekends come around, it's, if there are a lot more people enjoying themselves there rather than saying, let's go to anywhere else. And that's just kind of where I stand with this. I mean, when I was brought on board, I want to make it grow. I want to see people all over the place. I came from an area that was very heavily populated. I love to see the life. I love to see the kids playing, I love to see the parents hanging out with their children, making good memories at the park. And I think that there's a lot of potential for Lincoln Shark to be that place. Another example of kind of what we're doing is, I see a lot of children that are playing basketball. Those courts are a mess. We just ordered, we should have picked them up, four new hoops for that area. I have an estimate for synthetic covering for the courts. That way, it just makes it look better to an eyesore, nobody's going to drive past and see that and say, oh, it's a nice park. Along those with the tennis courts. Those are basically the first two things you see when you come into the park, and if they look bad, it's, you know, it's that first impression. So now, the tennis court project itself, it's something that I don't think is going to happen within the year. It's a very expensive project itself. The last time I got a budget or an estimate on it was close to $200,000, and that's just a tear all up and start from scratch. Now, if we were to just renovate it, continue the color, make it look a little nicer, we're looking at $34,000. But I want something long lasting, you know, I don't want to do this every, so often, because that just adds up. And just kind of to add on with, for the public, in all these departments, I think the one common thing that held them out was softball tournaments. This area's big on their coed, they're big on their tournaments in the weekends. This last summer, we tried a couple of tournaments get rained out, a couple canceled, couldn't get teams in, but those tournaments directly affect each one of these that are on here. People reserve their shelters for during it, people have a concession all the time for tournaments, and I think that's where we took the biggest hit from concessions, was the lack of softball tournaments. And the pool, they drop their kids off at the pool while they go play. And I think all those go together with those tournaments, which is why next year I want to have at least twice a month, the town holding a tournament. We invite teams from other, we have some contacts with people that are big on their softball tournaments, have them bring teams in, we'll, we can offer them the prize at the end for each tournament, whether it be money, gift cards, council, whatever, please the public more. But that way, you bring those people in, each one of these will go up. People want to eat, people won't want to have to walk their kids all day, you put them at the pool, you feed them, they want a place to relax after, they get a shelter. I mean, I think that right there is going to at least utilize the whole park, at the same time helping us make money to give back to the park. Along with that, smaller things that I kind of want to see happen, the volleyball courts that are there, or that was there, I would like to put another one. The Y has their winter volleyball courts indoors, and I think an outdoor tournament throughout the summer would be a huge hit. I think everybody else can go outside and play, just play some volleyball, you put that court, you put at least two more courts of a decent size, I think it's going to bring in more people. And like I said, that's, my primary goal is to see that place grow. I think we have a ton of stuff there, I think we have a huge amount of land that's not being utilized to a potential for the, for the public. And so, basically seeing the numbers and seeing how low they are, I know that money isn't the biggest issue for parks and rec, it's more for the people, but to make more money, that money's going back to the people. It'll be going right back to that park, get more stuff, maintain it better. I mean, like I said, the inmates that do cutting in the lake, phenomenal job, phenomenal. It looked great, I get compliments nonstop about that. And I think we can do more so that when people come back there, you know, they'll, they'll see kayaks, people, for the most part, at least for me, if I see a beautiful scenery and I see people enjoying it just peacefully, it's one of those things that I want to come back to this. You know, if I'm having a bad day at work, just go back there, enjoy it. And I think that's something that we can give back to the people and have. And honestly, I mean, I'm excited, I mean, as many ideas I have, I mean, I'm not sure how far I can get with it, but I am extremely excited to see a lot of stuff come to that park. Because I mean, when I came from DC, there was no bit of land that big. We did not have any of that stuff, a lot of buildings, a lot of, I mean, we had rec center, but nowhere near all the land that we had. I mean, that lake is just, it's beautiful. I went to Bluefield College, I used to come from Bluefield just to go run that lake. I mean, it's, it's just something that I want to make stand out more than it already does. And I actually don't think it's acceptable at Richland, a lot of people don't know that Lincoln Shark is not there. And so, it's just kind of.
Are there grants available for like refurbishing the basketball courts or the tennis courts? Or there, is there one that uses like that available?
I have looked for them. The one grant that I did find and I'm looking into, it's a little bit of a long shot, there's a grant that goes to, I can't remember the name of it, but if you have a bald eagle living in your area, they give you money, and we do. We have one that lives in, I'm trying to get a good picture of one, you know, so you prove, but they're kind of, but I had people come up to me and say, no, we saw a bald eagle, and we get really blurry pictures. And it's a long shot on grant, but I know they help, they maintain that whole area where they live, and they give you enough money to maintain it as long as, you know, it lives there. And I mean, first, that's just a patriotic thing, you know, a bald eagle flying your lake, that's great.
I mean, but you're right, the basketball courts and the tennis courts.
Yes.
They're a mess.
I've got some ideas too, so.
Yeah.
I think that, I love hearing what you're saying so far. I think that your tennis courts are a rec for sure.
Absolutely.
But I wonder if in the meantime, while you were trying to get it renovated, if you, I think there's space there to introduce pickleball to people?
Pickleball?
And it's, there, I talked to Charles Rodheim, who's the director in Bluefield, West Virginia, and they've got a ton of people playing out there on his courts, so that's one thing. I would love to find a way, grant or otherwise, for a handicap fishing pier.
Yes, that's something I also looked into.
The Sportsman Marina, that's, that's in Abington, on the lake, they subcontract inflatables. They have a company there that subcontracts and puts inflatables on there that would cost the town nothing, and they come in and run it. So would you bring people to your park to use and eat your food and do all the other things in your park that you could charge for? So I would suggest we approach them and talk to them about that happening, and I'd love to see a beach come into there. And then with your kayaks, I'd like to see if they upgrade the paddle boards. They're just way under use, and I think if you use things like kayaks and you get kids with paddle boards, I think that, I think you could have a summer pass to use the whole park, and you'd get people coming from the county and outside the county.
Absolutely.
So I would love to see a lot of this stuff happen, and I don't think it has to be a cash flow negative that can turn into a positive.
Yeah, it's one of those high risk, high rewards, and I think that we put it back in there. And like I said, the tennis courts there, looking at earthquake went through it, and I think if we make them better, people will come play on them. Whether they, you know, they're good at tennis or not, it just brings more people in. They say, oh, if we play tennis today, like, you know, the courts are nice, just enjoy them. Same thing with basketball courts. Now, those basketball courts are used all the time, all the time, so that, that's why we have those hoops now, kind of give it back to those kids that love to play, because they did use all the time, even as bad as they were. So we actually have torn them down, we just have to pick up the hoops. But, but definitely the pier idea, I'm waiting for two quotes from two different places, one that does aluminum piers and the other one that just does regular floating docks, which would help out the kayak idea, you could have them rented, just have them tied up to the floating dock, and you just take them off, right off that pier. At the same time, we have to extend it because it is a little shallow, and you don't want to be too shallow when you're setting up those kayaks. But yeah, definitely that's, the test court, when I first got here, it was the first thing I noticed, and that's that needs to change in some way. And like I said, we can fix.
And I feel like number one people that use the test courts is the schools, so there's might be a joint effort that's.
Right. Yeah, I, when I got here, I tried to talk to them.
I think the town's players should put that whole bill on the school.
Yeah. Yeah, and if I can get with them, I did talk to the athletic director before he left. The, I wanted to see if they'd help us out and put their logo right in the middle, the tennis, the school logo right there, so it could be their own court, which it already is. But kind of, they're giving to it, we give, we give that straight logo right there, so when teams come, they recognize it. And like I said, towards, I guess when the budget being in December, I would have a full list of everything, where it be, I am looking into grants because I know no way this will be cheap expense, and the, you know, it's not something that you can just take out of nowhere and put into it. But in the long run, I do, I hope to see all these numbers up, and I expect to see them up, and I think that just falls with getting more people to the park.
As far as the pool being cool, I know this from a parent when I had kids on the swim thing. Have you looked at getting, purchasing maybe a solar blanket to put on that thing?
Like a tarp?
No, a solar blanket, that you roll over on it at the end of the day, and so the warmth stays in there, then you go, so even if it gets cool at night, it helps hold the warmth in, and so it didn't drop 10 degrees overnight.
Also thinking in the long run, put a pool heater, completely catch a night swim. An idea I kind of thought about, let us do cold for it, have movies at night at the pool, something like that, just kind of, again, just keep it open longer, have more people come in, have more time, and I think a pool heater would be better that way, just constantly heating it up. And propane's not that bad to power this up.
When you come to the budget, you better have hired a guest.
Oh, I see, I got it, I got it.
I like to add a couple of things to it, and if Council would recall, it's probably
been two years ago when we hired the previous recreation director since then moved on. Recreation has always kind of been flat, and here's the courts, here's, it's just been, always been flat. And I'm beginning to see reasons for the long run here, but to build recreation, obviously comes out of expense, comes out of control, plan. But if you take a look at, you know, the, we're waiting to hear from Frank Barnes, his family, Brad's already made a proposal, his family on the trail. I was requested today, great idea, to look at a trail that goes from the end of Mary across the mountain, so that's another. Council's already given me directions on the bowling alley, the rec center there, and now you're looking at Ben, Ben is wide open, you know, he's lived through it, so now he's bringing it. They're, they're expensive, I mean, so next year's budget, you know, where we fumble for, you know, $50,000 or $60,000, I mean, public works, police department, every department in order to build your recreation department out of budget, it's going to be astronomical, it's going to be big. I mean, if you want to move it, but there's another route to Ben and I, and actually Commissioner Prude have talked about, and that's a baller, baller referendum, only playing. We attacked the tennis courts, I mean, the basketball court was probably about three weeks ago, that cracks in. So we went in there and tried to save $70,000 by cutting the cracks out and resurfacing them. But it's still, we don't have the technology in-house to make that a smooth surface. The reason we started on the basketball courts, because if we could do that, we could contribute to the tennis courts. But this, those two courts alone, in order to get the finish on, and what was your quotes? Did you have, y'all remember what they were on the tennis courts?
It was, yeah, it was close to $200,000.
I mean, that's astronomical to get those courts to the level that you can actually capitalize.
That was just asphalt too, that wouldn't.
Let me ask you this, if you were to do a poll in the tax base of this town, and I'm not taking anything away. Let me ask you this, if you were to do a poll in the tax base of this town, and I'm not taking anything away from tennis, but how many people that live in the town of Taz will play tennis?
Nobody.
How many would, how many would? I get that, I understand that, but if it's, if it's twenty people, it's hard to justify two hundred thousand dollars. But if you can turn those courts into multi-use courts in some way, so there's other things that can be happening on them, then it becomes much more viable for a small community like this, so...
I mean, I had an idea how that was hap, there's four courts there, it would affect the high school, but if you take two of those courts and you could put pickleball on one side and have two tennis courts left, don't worry.
I think you could probably find a way that you could always do both.
You know, Ben's been to me several times, if this costs or that costs, and I'm always saying, "Put two more screws in." And let's, let's make it, let's make it work.
With the sports, basketball and volleyball and all that stuff, I mean, it's great to have those opportunities for our kids to show up and play, um, and we need that. But if you look at tourism and day-to-day operation, it's not those things that are creating the draw for people now. It's the, it's everything we talked about, the lakes, it's the, it's the, it's the individual outdoor opportunities. It's the, um, you know, the frisbee golfs, and the kayaks, and the paddle boards, and the zip lines, and the rope courses. I met a gentleman in Abingdon, they built, uh, was part of the, the leader of the team that built the, uh, ropes courses and zip lines at the Park City Olympic Park, and, in Utah, and he's building around here now. I asked him, "Could you build like a ropes course for kids that's just like eight or ten feet, six feet off the ground?" He goes, "Yeah, we do them all the time." So, I mean, you've got the woods for that, there's things that you could do, and, you know, when you start talking about things like that, people don't expect to do that for nothing. But if you had summer passes and weekend passes, or ten-day summer passes, or things like, there's great opportunities for our kids.
That ambition right there is what collectively needs to be put together in a package. I would rather, I would rather float a, you know, a two million dollar baller to bring something big, bring it, make it real, instead of all this little plug and chug, and dress this up, and let's put a Band-Aid on this, and let's put a slide here, and let's patch the tennis courts. You know, in order to make it real and to make it big, you gotta, you gotta dream big.
And you have those, when you have those kinds of activities for people to do, that brings in not just, that brings outside tax dollars in. And when you have your softball tournaments, that's outside, outside tax dollars, and soccer tournaments, and that's...
Well, not only that, it also...
Restaurants, hotels, gas stations, and everybody else in our community, so...
But you're taking the trail, and, and you know, there's money in there for the, for the trail going from Barnes up to four fifty quarter coming around, but you're, you're looking at sixty thousand dollars there. I mean, just in fixed projects, then, a lot of this is in terms of money. Yeah, so, I mean, you add that to the next green, and then you got the pool that it has...
But if you do one or two of those, if you do one or two of those things next year, and then maybe you get that company out of Abingdon to put some infla, some inflatables in your lake, and you combine that with, with your pool with the slides, now you got kids coming, and how much does four kayaks and four paddle boards cost?
How long's the pool been there, man?
Uh, it was built in sometime in seventy, seventy...
We're, we're chopping con, bags of concrete and walls out every year, I mean...
Yeah, when they were innovating, innovating, it was a second time, and schools did get innovated.
They didn't train it, turn it into a skate park.
I would like to write a deal, something big, John, cause I think that's really what we need to do, something big, attract people, get their attention, let them know something's happening here. I know Softpool has done something like that for the water.
Yeah, Wave Park, the Wave Park.
Wave Park, you know, that's the kind of thing I think that would be, would be very important. Yeah, and I've been to the Wave Park and Softpool with my kids.
You're living history, to me, you see it now, what it is to do that little project there, to put that little sliding board in, and then to build a little trail, and then to fix a tennis court. I mean, you're living that right now, you see that mentality right now, that's what's been practiced. So, you can keep building it, or you can get together collectively, put together a town-wide recreation plan, it's gonna cost big bucks, and have a return on investment, but, um, it's gonna take some, I mean, just two, three months.
The well and alley part, along?
Just two months ago, you know, we were talking about, you know, the rec center over in, in the north of Taz, like, I mean, you can't say, "Okay, where's the trail at, then where's, where's the park at, and where's the basketball court at, and where's the pool at, where's the slide?" I can't, the boys won't do it, it will not do it, I can't.
Hey, Debbie Connor, how do we do it, Dennis?
You, you collectively get together, seriously, I'm glad you have...
That's also the reason we need to get, we need to gather, yeah.
That's exactly right.
So, the recreation committee comes into play.
Do you have one?
I would grab one.
This is gonna be the chairs.
It really does, I mean, that's the only way you're gonna...
And yeah, there's a quote, let me tell you, we did this, we did this ten years ago with the YMCA, everybody said it couldn't be done.
Yeah, and look what you came up with, this is a home run.
It was all because we had a board, where everybody could see it with Brad running, collecting money.
So, I'm gonna give him a couple more redheads, let him put some more screws, and a slide, and more, and give him some more concrete when he need, and we'll keep patching and keep going. Woo! That would be nice if I was to say to you, "Yeah, trail again somewhere."
We can do it. We just committed on, right?
Yeah, let's dream big.
Well, you need to do it before the next budget period and, uh...
Oh, wait, wait, we've done it next budget.
Me and I appreciate your excitement, enthusiasm, and if there's a cheerleader for recreation, it's gonna have to be you, so...
I'm there.
Brandon?
I'm there. Oh, we're uniformed every day. Thank you, Cancel.
Next on agenda is some of my comments, and, uh, last month, we had a young, a young man came for us with the childhood cancer, and I had an opportunity to go to the vehicle, uh, that week, and it was his act. And I happened to stand by his mother, and we were just talking about the struggles, struggles he's had. And he said, "One thing about this young gentleman, he's always positive, no matter what he's encountered, he's always said something positive about, uh, in, in life and somebody else." So, I took that to heart, and with our activities, and sometimes you can learn from different people, and I did, and I learned from that same gentleman. And we've had many activities since our last council meetings, and I'll, I'll go over some of these a little quickly. Of course, we had the cruise in, that was the last cruise in for, for the year, and luckily enough, none of them was ranked out. And I wanna thank that committee, and the town police, and the, and of course, the, you know, the public works for all their endeavors and, and county employees, they were there ever, ever not. Uh, and, you know, that attracts a different crowd than we had this weekend, you know, every event had its, its must-ward attracted a different crowd. That's good, uh, this was an older crowd, and Edith has, has earned almost all of those, and, uh, we appreciate the time. I did happen to meet with the mayor, Marion, uh, during the football game, and I invited him over to the cruise in. And he asked me how many cars, you know, we have, and I said, "Well, we have between a hundred and a hundred and fifty, normally using Main Street's parking." And he said, "We've tried it over here, and we only had thirty or forty cars," so, you know, and Marion seems like they always got more up on us, as far as tourism and stuff, but I think we've won up them on that. And I was on vacation the following week, and Todd texted me that there's a group of motorcycle people was coming through town for the POW and MIA. And so, I took it on Saturday afternoon, and along with the police department and the public works, and we waited about three hours for the POWs and MIA's to come through town, and they, they showed up about six o'clock, and it was supposed to be here at three. Uh, that was probably about two hundred motorcycles, and basically, they passed the flag to the state of West Virginia. But the one thing I get, it was a very eluding ceremony, but one thing on there is sort of like anything else we do in the town, their motto was, "Not forgotten." And, you know, whatever we do in town, recreational, whatever, don't forget. And then I told them during, when I introduced them, I always say positive. And we had a homecoming parade, and that was exciting for the kids, and the reason I mention that is, uh, Mary Jane Smith came for us about a year ago. We honored her going to Disney World, and she ended up being a homecoming queen, so congratulations to her. The next event was, uh, the police department kids fishing day, and that was pretty neat too. Basically, all the state staff was out there, and, well, what did you say, a hundred kids or so?
Yeah, we're at close to a hundred, probably.
And waved about three hundred fish in the little pond out there, it was neat seeing the little kids, and basically, they were four to twelve-year-old kids fishing with their parents and, and, and some of the police officers. And last, but not least was last weekend's October fest, that was a huge event, a lot of activity going on with that. And one of the things that came out of that, had a gentleman in church, was talking about our October fest, and he said, "Taz was alive." Just think Taz was alive, just think five years ago, Taz was about dead, now we're alive. So, I appreciate that comment, and Dave Woodard also came up to me during, during the event, and said, "Taz is really getting the reputation holding good events." So, I thank them, and I thank the public works and the police department at Townstead for all their activities. And I'll post, we will thank the public for, uh, coming out and supporting our activities. Without them, none of these events would be possible, and that's all I have. Okay, next on agenda is the approval of the minutes. The council meeting in September twelfth, I have a motion to approve those meetings, that's presented. I have a second.
Second.
Any additions or corrections to those? Here none, call for a vote on paper, say aye.
Aye.
Next on agenda, agenda is the financial report, and Lee Anne?
Over the last month, we have had our auditors here, we are still working with them, and I talked to them today. They hope to be finished with us by the end of the week, if we can wrap everything up. Um, so that was the last weekend, September. So after that, we've been working on getting our taxes on the computers and getting them ready to go. I hope to be able to mail them out Friday. If no problems come up between now and then, I think that'll be able to happen. Um, do you all have any questions on what was in your packet?
Lee Anne, you need to mention one thing, you mentioned that to Todd, and I was down here one day last week for this week, and he came in the, she came in the office, had a piece of paper, and I'm here writing on hand.
So, I've been here for thirteen years, in that tax job, and now in the treasurer job, and to my knowledge, this year was the first year that it matched what the county had to the penny, one hundred percent. So, that was a very big accomplishment for me.
So, that means if there's any mistakes in the tax taking account of that, right?
Yeah.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the financial report and the defense financial report at the same time?
I'll make that vote.
You have a second?
Second.
Uh, any other questions? You have a minute, call for a vote on paper, say aye.
Aye.
Next on agenda is the, uh, commentary.
I've got a couple, uh, projects I'd like to give you, things on, maybe I'd like to say one or two of the after-cancel comments. Route sixty-one, the bridge over Route sixty-one is under construction. They've set, uh, signs up, they're also working on temporary traffic light there to form your, uh... So, it's, uh, it'll start pretty soon, it'll be one-way or one-lane traffic controlled by temporary light. The town welcomed the Tazel sign on the eastern end of town in the westbound lane, it's completed all with the grass. In fact, we got the topsoil spread out, so it's lit up, it's been a long time coming, it's been a lot of patience there, I appreciate that. We were donated some cans for trees, flowers, et cetera, from Lowe's last year. I know Chris Brown was very instrumental in those in reality. We had some complications with the tree on Main Street early in the year, and I think Miss Santala has, has finally got a, a plan that she wants to see used next year, that we feel like will have a better chance of surviving this climate around here. So, we'll be putting all of those things out around town. I think we, Cancel brought up the idea of taking them out north, Tazel, the problem was transporting them, so we found revenue to do that, so we look forward to bringing those back out next year. And I've got a couple of updates on the train station, with Dr. Mullins and Remi, that's what I'll hold off on every day.
I was noticing the sign out by the museum, looks great, so taking care of it, I mean, they had like pumpkins and flowers out on, I just think it looked great, I noticed that.
I noticed that today too, so the eastern gateway sign will look great when it matches it.
Yeah, we, we still got to put some topsoil in, I think.
And by the way, that's not all in the house, so...
Yeah, it was all, that one was built one hundred percent in the house.
You can't tell, yeah?
Another club worked, Donnie, with his leadership and his men, um, made, made it happen, it took us a little while, with the new jungle water lakes and everything else, but we got it done.
That's where we chose to have our calendar picture taken also this year.
Generally good. That's all, yeah.
Okay. Next on agenda is a planning commission, and, uh, Ms. Jackson, did you attend the planning commission?
Yes. But I don't know who Chris... Chicken poops.
Actually, we did have one this month.
Okay.
We all people tried to handle it.
Okay.
Chicken flies one month. Chicken's a duck.
Okay. All right. Next on, train station.
Well, the train station, uh, we did open the biz this month for the train station, and I see that under unfinished business, that's the first thing we're gonna vote on, talk about, so Todd, you wanna, I don't know if there's any miscellaneous here, if not, that's the way you can have us go.
Absolutely, um, I wanna be sure that Dr. Mullins and his committee gets as much praise for the patient. I know that it hasn't been quite often every week, I got a phone call or some encouragement, working those twenty-one grants, MAP twenty-one grants, those enhancement grants, they'll change, now that they have the new administration, it'll be MAP twenty-one, and they'll be always changing at the federal level, but they are absolutely, um, processes of challenging your patients, and they have, and Dr. Mullins and his committee are anxious, they're excited, they've been extremely patient, but we just received a go-ahead from VDOT to request, um, to offer a recommended low bid. Now, that sounds weird, but even though there's a low bid, before we can give somebody a reward for low bid, we have to write to VDOT and say, "We want your permission." And it really is, it's just a, it, it takes a lot of patience, but if you're, if you already know it's going in, you can handle it better, but that doesn't mean that the people around you deserve it, so I, I do struggle with it a little bit, but we just drafted a letter to VDOT, so hopefully, you know, Dr. Mullins, I'd like to say next week, but you know how it goes, hopefully in the near future, we'll get a response back from VDOT, which will be positive, and then we'll be awarded low bid. The low bid does leave quite a bit of room, if you've looked at those, that information in here, there were two areas in there, one being the roof, the other one being the terrazzo flooring, both of those areas, the estimate are heavily underestimated. The terrazzo flooring had an eighty-five hundred dollar expense, and then ended up being a... The terrazzo flooring had an $8,500 expense and then ended up being a $75,000 expense. The roof came in at 170, it was estimated 60. We do see a lot of daylight there and negotiating. The contractor has unofficially agreed to negotiate upon award and won't proceed without that negotiation. But the terrazzo flooring is a very high-quality, cosmetically very attractive floor. However, it's concrete in there. And my opinion, retaining the historical value of the building, exposing that concrete, polishing that concrete and leaving it as is has a value to it. You can always put down a rub or a laminate floor later on. So a lot of those, the roofing, you can't find that at Terrazola today. You're not going to be able to match it. It's got a head and gutter line in it. So we're going to be looking at some artificial, artificial roofing that matches it cosmetically to the best of our ability. We'll be doing the heat and cooling, the plumbing and the electrical in-house to try to cut back on the cost of the project. So I'll bring before you in the near future more accurate, more solid numbers as we proceed forward. But I'm very confident that the long wait is coming to an end. The low bid was in your package here, it was right around 500,000. That's not including alternate deductions. So we'll be thinking that up in-house. And we have a certified plumber, certified electrician, HDAC, so it won't be a problem to do in-house. Now, the other projects, while we're doing that project, it'll always be that story as long as, you know, local governance here. So obviously, we'll have to concentrate on the train station because of the timeframe and the federal enhancing side of it. So we'll put all of our effort over the next several months of the train station, revitalize and then bring it back to life, so.
I did visit the train station in Permian Beach, Florida this week. And it was, the station was actually a little older than ours. It was restored about 10 years ago. We got a lot of good ideas.
Good, good. Todd, how, how long is the bid?
Um, we've asked for, we've asked the contractor for cooperation with their debt. But he, he worked with us on that. So all the bids are on the 30 days. I've put a barrier in there, but he's cooperating with us on timeframe.
So should we, if you get the okay tomorrow, should we have a special call meeting to locate the bid or?
Um, I'll just let you know via, via email. But you've got the low bid in front of you. And once again, my objective is to stay within the grant. I think the grant, Dr. Mullins, was for 420, close to 80%. So my objective is to try to stay within yet, but also recognize our required local match and also the grants that we received through the Thompson Foundation.
So was this contractor agreed to let you do the HVAC plumbing?
Well, that was actually an alternate, it was an alternate add. There was three sections. You had mechanical, electrical plumbing. They were alternate adds to the base contract. So the base contract was 500.
Is that what those three are?
Yeah. So we don't have to award those. If the, if the, if the contract had came in more attractive numbers, we could have said, "Okay, take alternate add and add." So unfortunately, they did not.
So was that 532, whatever it is, you subtract out each one of them.
Yeah, what we'll do is we'll pull out the flooring, the terrazzo flooring. We'll pull his quote out, which is in the 70s. So you'll take that number minus the 70. You'll take that number minus the roof. And so we'll get it down to the budget. Pretty close to. Yeah, the budget. The rest of it, we have a local match. We have a 20% local match and we'll, we'll invest that into the HDAC of the plumbing. And keep in mind, there's two perceptions of it. It depends on if you're a treasurer or accountant, there is a big difference. But we already pled for manpower. So you've got the Terrazola, that we'll be looking at, you know, when we offset that in-kind match. If we want to stack it, VDOT will allow us to use off-street rates that we can charge to it. So there's a lot of, we won't have a problem doing the in-kind match.
Okay. Any other questions for the public on the train station? We passed this, big process here. Okay, next on agenda is second reading. I made a home occupation ordinance.
As council member calling, we had asked you two components to the home occupation ordinance. The first one being just to allow home occupations as a use under your zoning for purposes of R1. And the second then, in order to really make that fully effective then, was to actually modify the definitional section of home occupation, which was fairly extensive. As you may recall, last time you had a vote, you waived the readings of votes. You would need to have a waiver on both and have a vote on both of which actually amending 23, section 23-19, which is the actual use provision. And then section 23-1 is the definition of section. And I see one from the general public here tonight had any questions, but I think it's pretty self-explanatory. Fairly straightforward.
Now, do you have a motion to spend the reading?
Someone.
Second.
Of both of them or just second?
I think you need, I think for the first two minutes, you need to do a waiver on each one. So this one, I would just go ahead and there, do section 23-19 first and then section 23-1 second.
Okay, all right. I have a motion for section 23-1. The way that reading of that.
Second.
Okay, any questions on that? It's absolutely preemptive, so that's wouldn't be reasonable. I'll pass that. Okay, we'll go ahead and do a vote on that. I'm in favor of the home occupation ordinance. We'll do a roll call.
This will be for section 23-1, is what you waited for. This will be the vote on 23-1, this is the definitional section.
No one needed to vote on the waiting?
You just did.
You just did.
You did that first.
We already did. I guess we have a, we have a.
Motion. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm in favor, say aye, I'm sorry. Now, I have a motion for approval of the home occupation, section 23-1. Care to do a roll call vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carry next is the, next ordinance. We can read that if we need to, it's relatively short. And I'll go ahead and read that and nobody can wave this. Bid, this is section 23-19, bid ordained by the council of Tazewell. Virginia hereby asks to file amendment to the town code, section 23-19 regarding permit use in residential limited R1 zone. Section 23-1 is use amended. Issue is number 12, is home occupation as defined conducted by. Now, the rest of things remain unchanged. Do I have a motion to approve section 23-19?
Someone.
Have a second.
Second.
Any questions? Again, a roll call vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carry. Next is on agenda and since we don't, we only have four council members, I will, we'll bring that up next meeting.
To pass.
Yeah. Which is the temporary change in the council meetings.
No, you jumped ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It happened, Mayor.
I know. Been a long night.
You want to go ahead and take up the IEDA?
Yes.
I think you can. What this is, folks, is when the IEDA was proposed and was basically developed by the council, it happened back in 2005, the bylaw ordinance was established. However, at that time, there was a formal adoption of an ordinance to go in the administrative section of the code. There have been bylaws that were adopted by the IEDA, approved by the council that have been in place since the IEDA. IEDA has been effectively working for the last two years. But what you're doing, or has been proposed to be done, is to actually then have a complication of those bylaws into the code, which would be under chapter 2 of the administration. This also, as you can see from your mix, from your, excuse me, from your package, it's fairly lengthy, but it is a four-page one. It's, I would recommend unless there was a particular request from the gallery that you do a waiver for tonight, because it's strictly, this is the first reading.
Any more?
I'll make a motion and you wait.
Okay, I have a motion, you have a second to wait the reading.
A second.
Any comments or questions?
Well, we have to read it next time.
I'm hoping you've already read it.
I mean, I've read this on the day.
Now, unless you, council specifically wants to, that's one where it's been available for inspection by the general public for the last four weeks, so. Two weeks, excuse me. So it will still be there again if they want to come back and look at it.
We don't need the public carrying on that, do we?
No.
Okay. Okay, I hear a motion and a second. Any other comment? Here none, call for a vote on paper, say aye.
Aye.
That's all for now. Next is first reading.
Okay. Since I jumped ahead on temporary change, we'll pass that. Next on agenda is the team use for new business of youth.
I think you've got a letter from Mrs. Patterson, an email that was sent to me. For, told us closer, I've got a little bit of conflict of interest in this, in this request. I asked the mayor if you want to pick that up. But I would recommend that if council wants to consider that, you don't donate it. You just, how do you say it?
Give it to her.
Give them credit, just give them credit up to that value. And by the way, because of that conflict of interest, I would say any, not, you know, if there's two or three teams, she may coach one, maybe others, but just that credit up to $1,000 total. It's up to council. I do have conflict of interest there.
Okay. Before we bring up all, last being, how many people actually in the gym that is actually youth teams? Do you know?
Teams, I haven't had any teams. I know the preschool uses it four times a week and then the church group uses it on Sundays. But I know reservations from teams or anything. Not aware of it.
Okay. Of course, you went and done about last year.
My daughter was on Annie's team last year. And maybe we're there regularly, I know that, so.
The reason I ask the question is, you know, you can't say one group's going to get the whole, get it every week, five days a week at a certain time. And I'll, I'll agree to have it.
I guess we could tell her that is that based on, I mean, family one handling, I guess, right? Based on that building, you may want to, but you're going to divide it equally among whatever team wants it, right?
Just need a motion to, we will do that.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I have a topic, too. Why, I just think this is something we need to try to do if possible. Because it's, I know in the back, when my kids were playing and I was coaching them, it is a hard time, you know, trying to find the team space. We know at the high school and the middle school and, you know, you're keeping them busy. And so I think if we're trying to do it, I, you know, you're going to, it's going to be a headache for everybody. So I'll make that motion.
A second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Ask for, ask for, ask any youth group.
Yeah, it looks like she has three teams that, so they can, some combination of $1,000 value.
And I will tell you that from what I've seen, most of the kids, I mean, we want to help all kids, but I will tell you that from these teams, most of these children are from the town tax base, so.
And you can limit, you can say an hour and a half or an hour is at, at the maximum as opposed to two hours, you know. We got up to the big discussion. You have a motion and a second. I'm in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next is the first reading, have a BPO.
Yeah, maybe you can, I could cancel, we do, we did due diligence several months on BPO. We had an increase from 15 to 23 on retail and financial real estate professional, 15 to 25. Got an ordinance there in front of you, is a, just need a vote to proceed with that. Keep in mind, it will not be affected until January 18th.
Okay. All right, so I'll read this, section 15, 44, license fees and taxes. Bid ordained by the council of Tazewell. Virginia hereby asks to file amendment to this town code, section 15-44 regarding the rate of tax to be assessed against every personal business subject to license there who or which is engaged in the retail sales or engaged in financial real estate or professional services under a town title, Virginia Uniform BPO ordinance. This section 15-44, license and fees. Section 1B is for retailers, 23 cents per $100 gross receipts. Section C is for financial real estate and professional services, 25 cents per $100 gross receipts. Do I have a motion to approve this?
This is the first reading.
Okay. Yeah, that's right. Okay. Next is the approval of the holiday time off.
Now, this is council's favorite section right here. Every year since I've been here, I've been, been thankful for that.
You're raising all that, you're using work.
Half-day on November 22nd, all-day on 23rd, 24th, is any personal policy. We're asking for, I'd like to recommend that council consider all-day November 22nd, obviously 23rd, 24th. Christmas holiday, personal policy is a half-day December 22nd, all-day 25th. We're asking council consideration for the 25th and the 26th as full days and New Year's following broker lien elections.
I'll make that vote. I'll second.
Any discussion?
Does this include you? 24/7, for you, sorry.
Todd, you think we can actually put this in the personnel man each year and never really make a vote on this?
Well, it doesn't make, it's the holidays, it's chase on, I mean, if they have the weekend.
Well, especially Thanksgiving, always a week.
We can read word that, that was historically council's way of saying, "Thank you, thank you." Yeah, so I just always let it be something to vote on, but we can put it in there if you like.
Yeah, it's all right. We'll just put it on. Okay, we have a motion.
We want to thank council.
We have a motion and a second. I'm in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next is the resolution to support the median.
Mayor, if you'd like, you can read that stuff. I'm assuming the council will proceed with this, $100. Everybody patiently. You want Robin reading?
Yes, I don't have it.
Whereas a proposed Dominion Energy Virginia Pump Hydroelectric Storage Power Station in southwest Virginia would bring approximately 576 million in economic benefits to the Commonwealth. And whereas the coalfield area lawmakers have promoted hydroelectric storage as one way of addressing the region's economic challenges. And whereas the legislation passed in 2017 allows a Virginia utility building a pumped storage facility in the coalfields to petition state corporation commission for recovery of its project costs as they are incurred. And whereas city and county governments within Virginia's coalfield region supports the concept of developing pumped storage. the concept of developing pumped storage technology in the region and agrees to a revenue sharing plan, now therefore be resolved that the Tassau Town Council hereby supports the construction of a hydroelectric pump storage facility in Virginia's coalfield region and agrees to a revenue sharing plan among the localities within the region, given in my hand this tenth day of October two thousand seventeen.
Now, do I have a motion to approve the specialization?
Aye, some move.
Have a second.
Second.
Any comments? Here now, call for a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carry. Uh, next is the top off, pick up on the potential mission.
Um, I'm just bringing this up, uh, I had somebody who was concerned about the amount of traffic, and I know that y'all have said, y'all are fully aware of it, but when you go to the side of the middle school during events, uh, traffic is parked on both sides, and very concerned that we had emergency vehicles getting out, people that may live in the area moving. The only way I know that you can control it is to remove the parking up there, and I'm, I'm not recommending that at all, but I am open to any discussion that you'd like to have, or if you.
You say the middle school or?
Tassau.
Tassau.
I'm sorry. Okay, I was not just, well, it's all around.
Right.
Um, there's another problem for us on the day is that when they're picking up their kids, the traffic parked on both sides of the road, and I was, I actually had Travis from the, uh, TV station talking this evening, he, he was talking about the traffic on the other end of the football field, backs out and, backs out in the road a lot, so I'm not sure what remedy is, um, one suggestion that we can do is ask the school to request that the parents quit parking their quill, uh, twelve o'clock and staying there for hours, and it does happen. Or any council, you can, you can have, obviously restrict parking on both sides of the roads there, and I'm not in a position to recommend that or defend it or, uh, called, I'm not that much experienced in that, in that area, that's the situation, it's been brought up to me, so I'm just bringing that up for discussion to board. I know all of you are aware of where I'm talking about the situation, you know.
Well, they're paying a multitude of rats of, throughout the years of pickup of kids and, and, uh, not with those solutions.
Yeah, I'm running out of police officers, all within section. Um, I would cancel, feel about restricting the parking on the side of the road, uh, putting no parking signs up between certain hours, and of course, it ends after hours, are going to also pose a problem in this situation, but.
Well, with the football, you can have different, you have, because they don't practice, park on, on the practice field anymore.
All right, well, I appreciate. You know, I would have to bring it up, I know, I honestly don't have a, I just looked at it and I don't have a solution for it, you know, the solution we had for the, the school up here, which still has some problems there, uh, I know that our advocate chief is going to go visit tomorrow, try to continue to work, you know, with all the park, but all of our schools have.
Well, I really think that it needs, number one, come from the administration, uh, from schools, and, and listen, maybe we tend by, advocate chief, you know, just, uh, take the principal or whoever, and show them what's going on. Now, I, as far as that football game and stuff like that, I, I've been to different places, and people are just going to park wherever they can find a place. And any other football court council? Okay, uh, Richard, uh, budget, uh, Sunset, uh, digital communication, I knew you was here earlier, I would have.
That's okay, I probably had her, I'd hope to be on your presentation, but I, I spent, uh, that's for minutes, you don't have to listen when you talk. And that's okay, I spent six years on Russell County, we're supervising, and, uh, uh, sometimes I need to be reminded why I didn't run again. Talking that parking assessment did, did it trip. Also, you're as great as. So I, I, I just take just a couple minutes, I may be making rounds through the localities. My name is Jeff bucket, and I'm a Sunset Digital Communications, and as you all well know, particularly Mayor, you know, hawks, I'm sure the government, but the process, uh, Sunset's in the process of purchasing the BBU alternate system, and they're at that, uh, successful closing, be moving into the, uh, new territory from Lee County to Blaine, and offer their phone and internet and cable TV services. Specifically, what I'm doing right now is, is working towards cable TV franchise agreements in the new localities. You, you all probably know, BBU was limited in their cable TV footprint, to their power grid, uh, footprint, mainly because of the power that cable TV lobbying, and, uh, so that's, that's something that we want to address out of the box, specifically for their existing customers, but there's also people on the BBU network that, uh, have their phone and internet at home, but aren't currently on cloud, have TV, have TV. Our attorney, Jeff Mitchell, who you all are familiar with, is working on a template that we want to offer to every locality, which you all are well aware, but not in the moving parts of franchise agreement as it used to be, uh, based on changes in the state code, but we have done a lot of due diligence, which has been very helpful on your front, to gather as many existing arrangements as we can, uh, in that footprint, to see what, you know, are common things from localities for those moving parts, but we're anxious to, uh, to get started, and we're, uh, was in Dulfield today, and then with the principals, and, uh, I don't want to give you the exact date, everybody wants to say October, so I don't want to stick with the third of March. Uh, there's a lot of attorneys that are working diligently to represent their clients and make sure all the eyes are dotted, views are crossed, and, uh, really unique transaction. But I think Sunset's committed to rural broadening, and it goes along with the discussion that Ben had, and the point that Todd made about thinking bigger, and all these things that you want to have, all these outdoor things, that, you know, imagine if all those were wired, and, or wireless, it's a better way, if you had, that's what I think, that's what I'm forty, so I still like to think I'm young, but, you know, the inspiration and younger, that's what they want, they want to be able to kayak high and still access the world, and that's different than my dad. My dad wants to not access the world, he wants to finish, he wants to farm, he wants to play with his son, and buy leases, and not be bothered with a cell phone, but, um, we're, we're excited about, and also we're excited about being a part of your lookout specifically, and, uh, I will say I'm glad to be in a meeting where, when you ask me where one of the location here, I don't have to say no, uh, but I've done that everywhere else, and, uh, I know that's a discussion for somebody else to have, and Mr. Biden's working pretty hard on that, but, uh, we're excited about being here, I wanted to let you all know, have that, hopefully have that template in the next couple of weeks, and be there to, Mr. Biden, Mr. Biden, to review the distribution, go to the proper channels. I'm going to leave you all in my car, um, for one raise in Russell County, and, uh, try and leave a couple of times, and fortunately, my wife is smarter than I am, and she, she decided we wouldn't do that, so, uh, I'll be here, hopefully be your contact for, for this, I can talk to the work we want to be doing here, but at least a couple of that ways, and, uh, change the way, uh, it's the Commonwealth, any questions I can answer for you, and I may not be.
I know we're very excited about, uh, having you at Sunset's, who's helping the town, and the county, and, uh, you know, it's, you can hear all the comments about the lack of good TV and a lot of good internet service, uh, we've had those, twice, two wins, two wins together, so, uh, you know, you got to do your jobs.
Well, I, yeah, we're, I, I live in town eleven, I live two hundred feet from the BBU backup, I can't get their service, I'm my residence, and, uh, I just, I just got done fighting with DirecTV, they up my bill, I have to call and threaten with it and remove, so I'm tired of doing that, I'd like that a little provider that's going to, number one, give me what I asked for, give me what I paid for, and Sunset's, I'm, is attracted to being for, uh, internet products, and thank you for the time, and I'll be back when we have an agreement.
Do you plan on increasing your footprint in this, in, in communities like Tassau?
Oh, yes, sir.
So not just like to, to get BBU now, you have to be in very specific locations, like I have BBU at my office, but I can't get it at my house.
Yeah, and, and some of that, you know, we've had, a lot of opinions going around about BBU, and a lot of negative opinion, but I did think that.
It's great internet.
Well, the difference in a public entity and, and a private entity.
Will you be going private, or is it just mostly?
No, no, what I mean is, is BBU is a public entity and a private business, we're more, we have, we made a commitment, and Mayor, and you can detail the seasons and all those things, so we come and play that over, uh, for, uh, ten thousand of those, residential of those, and, and BBU focused exclusively on commercial, and that was an economic development driving, driven decision, when, when it was built, and, uh, you know, there was a lot of foresight, you know, on, on part of, and, and, now, then governor, now Senator Warner, and they knew how important that part of the city, and we're, we feel like we're taking it to the next level, taking that back, uh, we're, we're investing our capital in private capital, and we're going to expand it to rural areas, so, thank you.
Mr. Bucket, uh, I was in the pod first of all, he, he told me three weeks, two weeks ago, that he wanted to be on the, I was, God, I wasn't having, sitting back there.
I've been to too many things to, to either of them, I know how it is.
Thank you very much, you all for having me. Even though we're left, and they also need a agenda, I want, uh. Thank you, I appreciate our panel. Uh, Trick or Treat. Trumper treat, and, uh, Robin put this together, and, uh, he explained that first a little bit.
Well, we, do I, I'm going to bring this up?
Yes, you do, you go, girl.
We have moved it from Main Street to Lincoln Shower Park. We're just going to see how it's going to work for the first year, um, it was just, there's a lot involved in it, like last year, we had on Main Street, it was on Saturday, much easier to shut down the street on Saturday, we looked at it, um, it's on Tuesday this year, because the general public complained, we didn't have it on Halloween, we needed to have it on Halloween, so we did, we listened, we moved it to the Halloween date, so this year it landed on Tuesday. Tuesday on Main Street is the busiest time of the week, we've got court, you've got most of your large offices, their employees are not even length their building, we would have to shut the street down at five o'clock. So it was just out of decency and respect for those businesses up in Main Street, we decided to give it a try, Saturday to Friday. We're starting to add on to it, this will be a learning year, I mean, we're going to have a park on the softball fields from one end to the other, I think Donnie, how many did you say, we could probably fit on there?
Put over a hundred vendors up there.
Which is more than what we had last year on Main Street, so we think that will cover, um, parking, they think, seem to think on Facebook, that's a big issue out there, they seem to think we don't have the room, but he's checked out parking to the bottom parking lot, plus the kids' own parking lot, plus the parking lot up there at, um, the fishing area. Plus the, which the theater's going to have a haunted house over there, so we'll use that just as overflow, so they'll have room for their customers there, but I've also talked to Sharon Thomas, and she's going to get approval for parking grants parking lots, so you've got numerous areas to park, walk across the bridge, should be very safe for the kids, but we're even adding three bouncy houses this year, games are going to be on the tennis courts, that the area church is going to supply for us, um, so Taylor's putting up the movie screen for a movie for the kids at seven, and then after the Trumper Treats over, we're going to invite middle school and high school kids out there for a movie at nine o'clock, free popcorn, drinks, and stuff like that, so it's just, we're trying to build it bigger, that's going to work out, and I'll look at something else for next year.
Any other, uh, for the council? I have a, uh, can I turn motion to the chairman?
So moved.
Second. All in favor say aye. Miss Miffey, very pleased you were in.